We will officially call to order the regular meeting of the City of Charlestown Council, August 5th, 2024, 6:30 PM. We'll begin with our customary pledge of allegiance, if everyone can join.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and through a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. For our invocation tonight, we have Pastor Shay Allen from First Badges Church. Pastor Allen, if you want to come forward.
Let's pray. Uh, Gabby, first of all, Lord, we just thank you so much for our city. Uh, Gabby, thank you, Lord, that we know that your word says that every good and perfect gift uh comes down uh from the Father of light, God, from you, does not change like shifting shadows. We thank you for the City of Charlestown, God, I thank you for each person uh that serves on the council, God. And, Lord, tonight, we just come before you asking for wisdom. Uh, Lord, we thank you for the blessings uh that you've given us, God. We have so much to be thankful for, for the favor that you've shown our city. Pray for wisdom for, for each one that's here tonight, God. Lord, we want to seek the welfare of our city, God. We want to do uh what is right for uh for the members here, God, for each family. And, Lord, I just uh pray that we could do that, Lord, and I thank you, uh, Lord, just for all the ways that you have worked, all the ways that you've been faithful. And I ask throughout this meeting tonight, Lord, that we would honor you, uh, Lord, that we would honor one another, and, Lord, that you would provide that wisdom that we need, and that you continue to bless our city, God, and we will give you, give you the praise for that. And we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
We'll have our roll call. Will Bertram?
Here.
Ronnie Blevins?
Here.
Shannon Elder?
Here.
Brian Hester?
Here.
Chuck Deaton?
Here.
Martha Rucker, Sharon Mary Hodges, and Court Treasurer Donna Cumber, present, as well as City Attorney Perry McCall. You've been provided a copy of the agenda. How would it entertain a motion to approve?
Uh, make that motion.
I have a motion by Ronnie Blevins. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon Elder. Any edits or questions about the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. You've been provided a copy of your minutes from the regular meeting on July 1st, the special meeting minutes from July 22nd, the current claims of the payroll allowance docket from June 26th to July 28th. So, just a, a quick edit on the minutes. That was from the regular meeting or the special meeting?
Regular.
The regular meeting. Um, under the planned unit development, the names of developers were left off, and uh just for uh Donna's foot and her record, she recommends adding those names, Dana Josh Gretter, so with that edit, um, we have that considered. Are there any other concerns about any of those documents? If not, any in motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Ronnie Blevins. Is there a second?
I'm sorry?
Second by Chuck Deaton. Final review, any edits, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, Donna, you said.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Is anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
No.
Nope? Well, welcome back, Mercedes Moreno, for our Legislative Youth Advisor comments. You want to fill us in on anything happening this first week in school? Oh, the big tire?
Well, it's nice to be back. Um, so far, everyone's just got their schedules. Uh, soccer and football and girls and boys soccer are starting up. There's not much going on, just everyone trying to get adjusted with Prosser, I know for seniors PM and juniors AM, and just freshmen getting orientated. Familiar with the school. That's about it so far.
Absolutely. Uh, we did have planned tonight for Indiana University Southeast Representatives to come and formally present Mercedes with the scholarship that I had mentioned to you last time. They have decided to give our Legislative Youth Advisors, both past and present, a $500 renewable scholarship for every year that they would attend IUS. Unfortunately, they had a conflict and couldn't make it tonight, but we will get them here for that formal presentation. Uh, and since you've come to report anyway, it shouldn't be a problem getting you here, so it's fine. Um, and then, I don't know if you know for sure, but I think homecoming is the 13th of September. Is that for sure?
Uh, I'm not sure right now, but I could definitely.
I think that it's the 13th of September, and so is everybody kind of keep that on your brain for that week, because we will, of course, have the parade that comes uptown, um, and we'll be posting those notices. All right? Okay, thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Uh, as far as Mayor's comments, I have two items for you. One does not require action tonight, and one might, so. Um, it's August, and that means budget season, so coming around is a copy of the draft budget. Here you go, Ron. Memo that highlights, we give copy to the attorneys. Can you pass it to Chuck? He might have given one. So, the custom is that I give it to the first meeting in August, so that you've got plenty of time to review. You've got the whole month of August to look at it. We try to schedule the public hearing and have first reading in our regular meeting in September, which we need to look at and make sure we don't need to adjust, because I don't know when Labor Day falls yet, but need to look at that. Um, and then, we try to do the second reading and adoption in October. Has to be adopted by November, and if we do that schedule, it kind of gives plenty of time to look at it, talk about it, make sure public has a chance to provide feedback on it, and, and move it through before November, so we meet our deadlines. I gave you a memo on top of it to kind of explain the bigger items in the budget. This, these numbers have come from the DLGF. Uh, Donna and her team have worked very hard. They've put through a couple different drafts, depending on the information they got back. If this is the most up-to-date information, we have from the DLGF. So, we passed the August deadline if anybody else trying to request money of us, so I think this is close to where we're going to be. Um, as far as the notable changes, the budget includes a cost of living increase of 3% for all city employees and elected officials. We always factor in a 25% health insurance allocation. I will say that with a caveat, that we go conservative on that and assume 25%. Our agent Larry Lynn usually is successful in making that less, but we always like to be cautious to make sure we have enough in the budget to cover it. It increases certain items based on 2023 actual invoices for utilities and some miscellaneous expenditures. Utilities have gone up for everyone, the city is no exception, so it factors those in. A 27% increase for our portion of the Clark County 911. Those, those bills have gone up, that's the dispatch portion that we pay. It also includes a 50% increase for the city's portion of the animal shelter. You might recall, I had an agreement for you to consider that we have tabled and we have not pursued yet. I'm still in negotiation with them. Perry, um, and Tubby Purcell, our Animal Control Officer, and I met with, um, Les Merkley from the City of Jeffersonville and the representative from the animal shelter. They have agreed that some of those charges that were in that line have needed to be removed, so I'm waiting on those final numbers. It will not be as high as what they originally anticipated, but we don't know where it's going to fall yet, so we just factored in a 50% to see where it's going to fall, but we're working with them still on that. It includes, um, increases in Parks Department payroll to account for the extended hours of operation and staff needed for the family activities, park and greenway concessions, um, and the new facility of the depot. Since we are hiring adult managers there, and those hours are extended, there's been a, a stress on the, the staff, so that includes the cap, in, increase there. And then it increases in the Police Department budget to bring our officer base pay to $60,000 a year. Currently, we're at 51.
Yes.
So, that is a sizable increase for our officers. That's been reviewed between myself and Donna and the Chief of Police in comparison with what other departments around us in cities our size are paying officers, and considering the need for officer retention, that's the number that we have set that is possible. So, those are kind of the big items. Another thing to note is that you will see that the budget increases a larger portion for a lot of the salaries, um, and, and benefits, and that is because next year, oddly enough, has 53 paydays, not 52. So, it's one of those strange years. It happens every few years.
Yeah.
Donna and I were debating on whether or not it happens after a leave year, and she assigned to me to do that research.
I did choose that.
I did not spend time looking back through the past history to see if it happened the year after leave year, but, um, for whatever reason, next year has 53 paydays, so we had to boost up enough to, to make those, those paychecks. So, I ask that you take time to look at this, if you want to meet with Donna or myself or both of us, please let us know, we're available, we've got awful months to, to look at that over and provide your feedback, um, before we advertise and have that special meeting or the, the public hearing at your September meeting. Okay? The other item that I had for you is a letter request. I'm sending two extra copies your way, Chuck, for the attorneys. For the Medella House. Uh, Bo and Brian will remember, because they were here last time, um, we receive a portion of an opioid settlement, um, from lawsuits that have happened where, based on our population, we've just received a certain amount of funds. Those funds come to us in two different categories. One is restricted and one is unrestricted. The restricted funds can only be used for certain items, none of which we have the ability to use here in the city. We don't, we, the city does not have an department or resources that we would use to spend those restricted funds. Unrestricted funds can be utilized by our Police Department, so we have that reserved for them to use. But the amount of restricted funds this year is $6,660.69. And the Medella House is a recovery home that has been in operation now for, is it two years? We got representative, yeah, two years now. And we do have some representatives here for the Medella House if you have any questions, but they have asked for that portion of the restricted opioid settlement this year, and so I've put that forth for your consideration. Last year, we did this for the portion we received last year, and we did it by resolution. So, tonight, if I can at least get the feel that we want to move forward, we can get the attorneys to draft up a resolution and formally approve that at your next meeting, um, if you so desire, and like I said, if you have questions, we have representatives from the Medella House here, um, who can answer your questions, but they are just asking for that restricted portion. And with that, I'll open it up to your thoughts, feedback, opinions.
I think that's a great idea. Uh, is there any other organizations in town that'd like to share that?
To my knowledge, no, and no one has, no one else has come forward and requested it. The Medella House actually reached out to, to me. Um, we've just been sitting on it, we haven't used it this year at all, it's been sitting there, um, and we've not reached out to anyone. They reached out and asked if, um, if they could have that portion.
And there may be other fund, settlement funds at some point as well?
Yeah, yeah. We, we, we continue to get notices of this. We just signed on with Perry's review. I did, uh, execute, I guess about a month ago now, there's another settlement being considered or being potentially, and we did sign on for that case, so there might be more funds coming, or whatever, they distribute those, they always tell us what portion of it is restricted, how it's restricted, and what we can do in it, so. But for now, this is what we've already received.
Did contact State Board of Counsel a couple things with the Police Department helping that move the managers for some equipment.
So, sober living homes or recovery homes are one of the things that they can use it for. If you guys are remittable, um, I can have the attorneys draft this up as a resolution for next time, pass it formally. If anybody has an issue with that, let me know. Did you have any questions for Medella House?
Is everything going well, um, over there?
Yes, everything's going great.
Um, can you give us your name for, for record, please?
Yeah, yeah. I'm Erica Woodson, I'm Vice President of Medella House. Um, everything is going great at Medella House, actually. Um, in the past two years, we have graduated over 40 women. Um, they go through our program, which includes 40.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Um, they stay at our home on average six months, some longer, some shorter, at minimum 90 days. Um, they go through a rigorous program, which includes, um, intensive outpatient therapy on top of AA, on top of, um, in-house counseling. Um, some are on medication-assisted therapy, some not, but, um, we've had some, you know, everyone's not ready, but for the most part, when they come, they're ready and they do the work. They give back in the community, um, we give back, we just donated school supplies to PR, um, they participated in the, um, recent parade, some of them work in the community. Um, they're doing good.
How many you have this time?
Six. We have a wait list right now of over 10.
Well, awesome. I heard a little bit about, you talked about last year, and I heard, heard y'all talking about last year, and I just kind of want to see where y'all went so far. This year, and God, how it progressed, but sounds really good. Forty, forty graduates in a year is a lot. It's a whole lot, and that's awesome.
They're doing the work.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody finding this draft a resolution and moving that forward? So, Perry, we had one from last time, I'm sure we can just mirror that.
Sure.
From this time, we can get that.
I don't remember the one from last time.
You wrote it.
All right.
I'll find it and send it to you.
It's somewhere.
All right, we'll take care of that, we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting to formalize that, so. Uh, thank you. That's all I have for comments that I need to make. I'm opening it this time for council comments. More questions?
I just want to, uh, welcome our new Assistant Principal and Principal of Charlestown Law School. We have Assistant Counsel at Strategy, John Bonjean, uh, how he comes from a very good background of, uh, his education director, and we have, um, John Tablo from, not true of him, John Tablo, he came from Silver Creek, so he finally saw the, saw the light, he came from Silver Creek, Charlestown. These are ABD for Bill Warner, who's basically, so I just want to welcome to.
That's great. Any other comments? Thank you. We've got a public hearing, so just straight into our ordinances and resolutions. Your first ordinance for your consideration tonight is a revision to the longevity pay for the police officers for the Charlestown Police Department. It's not a significant, it, it's really not a significant change, so in the past, the longevity was paid out on two years, so it was 2% every two years, and Chief of Police has asked that we just make that a little easier and say 1% every year. Um, so it's the same amount, it just, it's 1% every year instead of 2% every two years. Um, and that is ordinance 2024 OR 6, which amends ordinance 1992.
Do you give the?
Yeah, we have the.
The one for 20?
You don't have amended copy.
Oh, here it is. Did you put it in the book?
No, I just got this.
We just got it, we just made those changes.
So, you just added one paragraph to it?
Two paragraphs, actually.
On the.
Two paragraphs, one referring to, uh, the consult that had to go with the FOP to determine the 25.
Okay.
And then, um, just that language. So, that was the, really, the most significant change.
So, the, the where I though that is, the City of Charlestown Council and its consideration, considered judgment has determined that evidence incentive to maintain experience officers in the City of Charlestown Police Department, the longevity pay should be authorized for service of not more than 25 years.
Correct, and then, and then the next paragraph is the requirement that it has to, in order to go from 20 to 25, there has to be the, uh, item read with me, I can't think of the language, but, uh, comply with Indiana Code 36, 37 maybe.
Yeah, so then, uh, the City of Charlestown Office has to provide longevity for not more than 25 years of services provided as a result, the meeting convert process.
Yeah, but the FOP, yes, and the Chief had indicated that the FOP.
Yeah, the FOP, um, Salary and Wages Group has met and made this recommendation.
And that's what has to happen to go to the 25.
I wasn't aware that we were going to the 25 yet, honestly. I thought we were waiting until next year, but.
You can do the other one?
Yeah, this, this is only 20.
Yeah, it's, this is the revised one, so that was the question, so the language.
And I apologize for the.
That's okay.
The late add, but I got the, I read that email again from Chief, and then I read the response, and it was like, should we consider the 25%?
Right.
So, I think I meant at this meeting, 25 years.
So, he had, he had been, he had asked to go to 25, and we had looked at the impact, I mean, full disclosure with the council, we had looked at the impact on the budget if we went to 25, because that, going to 25 is an added incentive for, Chuck's looking like, we didn't talk about this, we didn't, it's just, I didn't know you were going to present this through, okay? Um, so Chief had copied Perry on this, and Perry went ahead and drafted it 25 without knowing that I had talked to Chief. So, basically, we looked at the financial impact of going to 25, and the impact is that it would add an additional $10,000 to the budget, that, for their department, they would need an additional $10,000, because even though right now it only affects one police officer that we have at this moment, and he's not getting $10,000, you have to account for this on every officer that you have on their per, in future wages. And so, I did talk to Chuck about it, because we were having conversations about the Police Department, and I talked to Chief, and Chief had said, if we wanted to wait until next year, we could wait until next year, but that the FOP, the Rose Island FOP, their Salary and Wages Group had met, and this is one of their requests, that for retention of officers, to add an incentive to stay past the 20 years, basically. So, that's why that got on here. The Chief is aware that if you want to wait until next year on the 25, you consider it, that is an option. He did not intend for this to go to 25 tonight, so.
And I would refer that, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I talked to, I was gonna say, I did talk to him.
Yes.
Uh, and it was a thing that, and that's why I haven't said a word, because he said it would be next year.
Yes.
We'll get through what we're gonna get through first, and then.
That's what he and I had discussed as well. So, basically, the paragraphs need to stay the same, it's just the percentage need to be adjusted in this to 20, not 25.
Well, the first one that I sent is, is accurate.
Is accurate, is accurate then?
And then you can just hold that on to next year?
Okay.
So, the one we have.
So, the one you had is accurate.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I've been aware of it.
It doesn't have to, because we're not changing to 25, we only have it at 20. It doesn't have to have that, whereas, because in order to change it from 20 to 25, they have to have justified that they had that meeting.
Okay.
And they have had the meeting, but Chief said it was okay to wait till next year, considering the impact on their budget this year, he said it would be okay to wait to see where we progress.
Okay.
Yes, that's the way I understood it, too.
Perfect.
So, for consideration then, is the 20, but redoing it to where they get 1% every year rather than 2% every two years. That's what you're considering with this ordinance.
So, not the change of date?
No, just the, the only thing you're changing with this is, instead of getting 2% every two years, we get 1% every year. And it goes up to 20, but just so you know, next year, they're gonna ask for 25. So, with that, I would need a motion to put ordinance 2024 OR 6 up for consideration.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Chuck Deaton, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Ronnie Blevins. Questions or discussion at this point?
Does this have an impact on it? I know that it's the same thing, but some years you're not, you get that increase.
No.
It doesn't affect it, okay?
That's fine.
Good, 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 I'm glad.
Yep.
Okay, one more question?
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as how that's unanimous, entertain a motion to suspend orders, consider it on second reading.
Make a motion.
Make a motion for Ronnie Blevins, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon Elder, questions on the suspension of the rules? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, so then we'll have the second and final reading of 2024 OR 6 on amending the longevity to just 1% every year rather than 2% every two years. I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chuck Deaton, we need a second.
Second.
Second by Ronnie Blevins, final time for questions, comments. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 2024 OR 7, should be much less confusing. It's just basically a grease trap ordinance. Um, the Sewer Board reviewed this, and it's been reviewed both by Sewer Attorney and City Attorney, um, just as a, as a step of getting our wastewater plants operating at its finest when we build this new one, one of the issues is we did not have an adequate grease trap ordinance, so any supplier to the wastewater utility that would be producing high amounts of grease would be held accountable for the standards set in this ordinance, and it establishes those standards and the fines in case of non-compliance. Um, it was, comes recommended to you by the Sewer Board, so with that, I need a motion to put it on the floor.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Ronnie Blevins, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon Elder, are there any questions?
Who, um, enforces this?
The Sewer Board, I mean wastewater, yeah. So, I mean, the wastewater director's the one who oversees it, um, and does any kind of inspection, and if they find someone in non-compliance, it would come up with the Sewer Board, and they would deal with it.
All right, that's all questions.
It's a step towards getting an industrial rate, so one of the, one of the things that we need to do as we grow in our sewer department and have more, right now, we don't have a lot of industrial, really, no big industrial users on our system, but as River Ridge develops, we expect there will be some, and especially with Shadow Lake developing, too. Um, this is just one of those steps, it supplies to restaurants and any kind of producer who's not producing nice stuff into our, their plant, so less we have to treat, if they treat it upfront. Any other questions?
I mean, do we know we're pretty much the establishment's set right now, or?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah, they, they monitor this.
Uh.
They monitor this, they can do testing at any of the manholes, so when, when a substance comes through the headworks right now that throws something off, or if they get some kind of heavy amount of grease or whatever, they track it back through the manholes and they can almost always tell you where it's coming from. And so, um, they'll, they'll have to comply with this as they come onto the system. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, entertain a motion to suspend rules for second reading tonight.
Make a motion.
Make a motion by Ronnie Blevins, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon Elder, questions on suspension of the rules? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, I have second and final reading of 2024 OR 7 on grease, establishing requirements of grease traps and grease interceptors. I would need a motion. Make a motion by Shannon Elder, a second?
Second.
All right, Ronnie Blevins, final questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. And then the last item for you is an additional appropriation ordinance. This one is for a new lightning loader for the sanitation department. I am happy to say that this money comes from the sanitation department surplus.
Yes.
So, um, we made a decision, um, has it been two years yet since we've changed to the transfer station? Yeah, so in review with the sanitation supervisor, Jason Dunn, we chose to go with the transfer station that's down here on 403 rather than use the landfill, and although, although our initial costs per tonnage are more than what the landfill charges, we have actually saved an abundance of money to buy new equipment, um, because we're not paying for the damage that was happening to our equipment at the landfill, we're not paying for the fuel that it costs to get all the way to the landfill. Um, it's been, it's been overall cost savings, and what we've done is we have, we have set aside that cost savings for essentially capital improvement within the department, um, so that we don't have to lease vehicles and we can buy those vehicles outright. And so Donna reviewed this and found that they have enough of the surplus to purchase this equipment outright without having to enter another lease, and that keeps our fleet functioning at its best. We will then turn around and through the Board of Works declare that other surplus and sell it at auction to continue to put money back into the program, just trying to manage that utility as efficiently and responsibly as we can. So that is what you're being requested tonight for this additional appropriation in the amount of $239,920.14, and it does come from the surplus that exists within the utility. With that, I need a motion to put ordinance 2024 OR 10 up for consideration.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chuck Eaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie Blevins. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Since we're really hoping to get this truck soon, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and get this one done on second reading tonight.
Make the motion.
I have a motion by Ronnie Blevins. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Second by Shannon Elder. Questions on the suspension of the rules? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So we'll have second and final reading of 2024 OR 10 on additional preparation for a new lightning loader. I would need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chuck Eaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie Blevins. Final questions? Nobody wants a ride in the thing when we get in? No one wants naming rights?
I've already called for a ride from Jason, so.
I will say that it's worth going, it's worth sitting on it and going out and seeing the precision with which these guys can pick things up. The fact that they can pick up things like toilets that are on the curb without even breaking the porcelain with that heavy claw is really impressive. And then to go out to the transfer station and see what a remarkable job they do out there keeping that place clean, because every time the guys come in on the concrete pad and dump, they come through and sweep. So that's what's saving us money. We were spending, what, $600 on a tire multiple times a month for tire punctures at the landfill that we don't do now because they keep their space clean and we don't have those same problems. So it is worth a ride along if you're a chance. It's fun. It's not like the wastewater plant. It's a little cooler. Alright, if there are no other questions, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you all for that.
I think they're hoping to get it at the end of the month.
Yeah, we're trying to get it, trying to get it by the end of this month. That's the goal. The other one is starting to get to the point where the repairs are getting.
Well, they're pushing back a couple of hours.
Yeah, they have, but I'm about to get on the call and see if I can throw all my way around here and get after them. I don't know. We'll see. They're doing the best they can, and they're a good company. They do a good job, but we do need that truck in. With that said, is there any other matter that needs to come through council? Last chance. Till September. Oh, September. Yes, so your meeting for September would fall on Labor Day, and we need to adjust that.
Probably need to get back with them, because I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Yep, gotta have a call here. Have you already advertised it?
Getting ready.
Okay, alright. So stay tuned. Donna will reach out with details on moving that meeting.
I will send you out an email tomorrow.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I had something written down. I thought we moved that to the 4th already, but I didn't know.
We'll follow up. We'll, Donna's gonna call up everybody.
I don't have a plan. I just can't set it, so.
Good deal. Alright, there's nothing else. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Chuck Eaton. Second, second by Shannon Elder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If nobody seconds it, we have to take your orders.
I would, I would second it if I were you.
We are adjourned. See you guys.